Numbers off to the left, uncollected that's showing the negative. That's actually a good thing. It's higher than the expected budget.
What do you like to get? You get the last most column?
Second last one.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, says uncollected.
I was looking for negatives.
Where there is a budgeted amount, there's a percentage of collected for the year. So, you know, our real estate taxes, that kind of makes sense for being only collected twice a year anyways, so we're 51.91% there. Muni tax, we're a little bit over 50, which is good. It's higher than budgeted. I don't budget for muni tax that comes from the state because anything that we get is a bonus. So, it's kind of a cushion as you really don't know. You can't rely on that profit tax to spend.
So, is your uncollected what you think we're gonna get?
No, that's what we've received. We received a 226, 771, 67, year-to-date, third column over.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it just throws that whole thing as a negative because there's no budgeted amount.
If you collected it though, why would be?
Because I didn't budget.
Negative.
Because it's comparing collected versus budgeted, and there's nothing budgeted. So, that's why it's a negative.
There's a negative amount that's uncollected since the amount they expected to collect is zero.
226, expected zero, so wouldn't that be a positive, like a 226?
I would think so. That's how I would set the program up, but that's not how it's set up by VIP. I would think that's a positive in my mind. But, everything else would be a negative, so I don't know how, why they do it that way. The good thing is we have 226,000 that we didn't expect to budget for. I don't know if I want to go through every line, but if you guys have had a chance to review it and you have questions, or you saw something that, you know, really stuck Because overall, we're trending positive, which is a good thing. Let's see if there's anything that I'd like to point out.
Are we always that low on collected for income tax at this point in the year? I mean, I feel like most of that should fall in.
Well, it's, what do you mean, the 4 million that we have uncollected? So, I budgeted for the full year. So, we only collected six months so far, so that's showing what we've collected versus the full year's estimate.
Okay, so Rita just hasn't paid us yet, but the full of 50.
Yeah, so the good thing is if you compare the 5-6, because they're halfway through, to the 4-1.
Yeah, okay.
I know, we, yeah.
So, real estate is percent, it should be 50% more because we're halfway through.
And it is, it's 57, 61.
But I'm saying if you don't look down there, if you weren't 50, you're ahead of that.
Correct, correct. Yeah. Now...
Why is the miscellaneous police parking is, where did we get all the money from?
Where, where, what?
First page, 101.
4515 or 00, 4515.
4515.
We budgeted those dollars to the land house.
Yeah, plus the 10, 5, yeah. I don't know, I could look into that for you.
Okay.
I'd like to know where Corset comes from also.
Yeah, no problem. Seems there's any other large numbers.
What happened with the vertical bushes?
Yeah, is that, are they gonna be paying again this year?
Well, it looks like they've probably paid their entire...
Have they paid their total?
Right? No, they like to pay in the first quarter. They pay in April for the full year, so...
They did pay $2,381 over.
But I only budget, see how I conservatively budget, I only expected 90.
Gotcha. So, next year, since the contract has been redone, put the exact numbers.
Yeah, oh, no, I don't do exact numbers.
Gotcha.
I round off to nearest hundred.
Is that a static dollar amount that's agreed to for five years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're the only ones, they wanted to pay upfront, but they pay upfront in April.
They pay theirs off and everybody's right where they should pay.
Yeah, everybody else does quarterly.
Yeah. And they actually, oh, you rounded it, so you didn't expect 92.
Yeah, I rounded it, yeah. And I usually round.
I was wondering why they paid more, are they gonna come and get a house plus interest?
No, I underestimate revenue and overestimate expenses. Unless, like the real estate, they get, when you send down your estimated resources to the county, and you don't put the actual that they're telling you you're gonna get, they get mad at you. So, that's why that one's not rounded, the top line on this page. The 1,00984, 171.
The real estate tax.
Yeah. So, second page.
At the bottom of page two.
Yeah.
The state seatbelt, it said if we pull somebody over and they don't have their seatbelt on.
I'm guessing that's what that is, yes.
Yeah, I've never heard of that being separated. The others I've seen, but...
I don't think we even get any of the seatbelt fines, I think the state gets it all.
Yeah, we might have to pass that along.
Yes.
Anything that says state gets pretty much passed along.
Yeah, we don't, we don't get to keep any seatbelt fines.
Funny thing, we've taken, we write another check out.
For certain things, yes.
It's probably just fine after the court.
It really, it really makes, I mean, this is the only one...
I'm thinking those last five get passed along. Jan, the last five there get passed along to another entity.
Do you know, to who?
Well, the state, the state.
Okay.
Drug law enforcement. I think that goes to our law enforcement fund. Indigent drivers, victims of violence, that goes to either the state or the county.
Do you get any fees from them? Because we're the ones doing the work.
Well, our mayor's court fines and costs are up above. Couple lines up above, but we get to keep those. Page two, so page three, the left, look at all these, all these strings. Collection agency, law enforcement, Akron Law Library, restitution. Not very big numbers.
Do you know what we sold on page two for 4810? Like those 19,000 that we didn't expect?
It says sale of property, 4810.
Could be all the equipment from a rec server.
Yeah.
Oh, that, okay.
Yeah, that's what that is. And tonight, you're gonna have a couple, two vehicles that are usable and that's totaled by the insurance company, the F, the Ford 250. So, we're gonna look at the market for those two larger trucks and determine the minimum based upon our mileage and what our mechanics think the condition of those two vehicles are. They're 2002 and a 2004. Yeah, so they're pretty old, but when I looked online yesterday, you could still get it for pretty pennies for some of those, over 10 grand.
Sure.
If they're in good condition.
I try buying one.
So, page three. Nothing, you know, to have any advance that we already made from a payback to the general fund from capital improvement. And then, so that takes care of that in full. And then a transfer in from 105, which is our, our income tax fund. You know, when that was created, they kind of estimated a percentage of how much we needed. So, we evaluate that on an annual basis, you know, based upon the refund activity and send some back to the general fund as a transfer because they didn't really, you know, how it was gonna work out through the years right in the beginning. Transfer in from 101, so that's our emergency reserve, or sending $100,000 to emergency reserves, so that's been taken care of. The refund program, the muni tax, same percentage, 57, 61, collected as in the general fund. Which kind of makes sense because...
Should be, yeah.
Should be.
So, that's a good check.
Little bit of muni tax.
Is that municipal income for 275 in addition to the 1.9 on the front sheet, or it's part of the 1.9?
No, it's in addition to.
In addition to.
Yeah, so you'd have to add all five of them up to get to what we're budgeting for, and I do that on the spreadsheet that you have the three pages. Down at the bottom, it shows what we're totally estimating for muni. So, we're onto Parks and Rec. Yeah, look at that, 57, 61.
Parks and Rec is having a great year with...
Programs, right?
Programming their membership for the rec centers a little bit down, but it's been down since 2020. But, yeah, they're just having a record year with everything else.
Yeah, we're already over the estimate.
64, even the rec center is over the estimate, so that's pretty good.
The rounding down at the bottom, look at that, 57, 60. Page six. Yeah, there's a membership line just slightly under the budgeted amount, 46, 20, halfway through the year. All the transfers have been made. So, this golf does not include the check that you gave me earlier this month. Further, I was at 50,000.
I think the estimates, we were, the estimate was 30,000, they were gonna kind of check for it, and we got over 50,000, so they're, they're doing very well over there.
Nice.
Yeah, that's based on their profits, so...
They had a fantastic event about three weeks ago, whether the youngins, their drive, chip and plug program, couldn't even get near the place they were just at.
Awesome. Good thing they have a nice car.
You can't say that.
That's right.
It takes money to make money. They have the best clubs. People come from out of state to buy hobbos.
Oh, yeah.
Because my son works for Eaton, who makes a lot of stuff, yeah.
They're in the top 100 company in the country for fittings and...
Okay. All right. Our water M&amp;E fund, the 210, gets carried over to page seven. So, we're 51% on the collection. But the good thing is I was able to increase the budget based upon, you know, the fee being collected through the property tax. The other vehicle license tax, a little bit up. Police pensions, a little bit up.
Think everything else is revenue, cash pays for itself.
Yeah. The municipal income tax for our safety service fund is 60% because that's a separate calculation.
Separate percentage?
Yeah, that we get from Rita. That's not spread across, that's directly for safety services, so Rita gives us a total on what gets collected towards that. Additional 0.25.
266 is coming in off this...
Which one?
266. 0.4%.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the ARPA money. So, we will be getting, actually, we did get that in July, so we did receive it in July.
Why is that's a slow drip?
Yeah, they couldn't pay us. You know what that was? That was, that was an adjustment of the 628.5 that they, for the second half, so they gave us the adjustment prior to annuals. Anyway, why wouldn't they just give it to us, to y'all together? But they, they said they couldn't give you the second half sooner than 12 months of you receiving the first one last year or something. 910, 11, 405. See, that 405 is back to the 57, 61 percentage. And then, that's about it. The TIPS, we're waiting on the second half election, which will happen in August or early September. And then I gave you the JET. And the JET's higher overall, 71.87% because of the smoking tax.
Now, now that, will that come out when we go into expenses? The question that we gotta pay back to them?
Yeah, quarterly, we have to pay a half of it back to minus expenses. Yeah, but that's always good, to have more money coming into the JET than less money because we get half of it. So, that's it for revenue.
You're gonna get a hold of Rita. So, limit the JET.
Okay. Are you sure I see her car there at night? Luck with that, I don't know what, dome lights on. So, expense report.
Where are all of our insurance up close to 100%?
Because, here's the explanation.
Wait.
It's not just year-to-date expense, it's year-to-date expense plus encumbrance. So, if I created the PO for a full year, that's why, because it's, so if I budgeted 100,000, I created a PO for 100,000, even though we haven't spent 100,000 yet, it's gonna show that you, you grabbed 100,000 to be spent.
You've committed to pay, but it's still in our account.
It's funded.
Yeah, yeah. Good question. So, a lot of those, you'll see that that's why for the annuals, we try and just create one PO for the year, so we don't have to do a monthly PO. Expenses are, there's a few I'd like to point out to you because I'm gonna have to adjust on page, page two.
So, I have a quick question about fuel. That is for all, that is, we only have one fuel line, right?
Yes.
Right? So, that's for all city vehicles, so that's not too bad.
No.
Correct?
And, you know, you guys had mentioned in the earlier meeting about fuel, and I said we're gonna be good. We had a large PO at the end of last year that we were able to still eat into for this year's expenses, so...
Meaning we paid at the rate that you agreed to when we...
No, just meaning I set money aside out of last year's budget that was unspent at the end of the year that I was able to carry over into this year.
So, the cost of fuel still fluctuates through the life of the year.
Yes.
And do we get it at a discounted rate as a municipality?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, all the taxes that we don't have to pay, we don't pay.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So, on page two, my asshole, and that's your, the police are also fueling here now too, or before they were going to the gas station, so that's gonna, time and energy savings there.
Yeah.
But those tanks are only so big and full so much, and we do blow through a lot of gas.
And we just met on site, me, Steve, and Dan, with that gentleman on Friday to review all of our tanks and, you know, the condition of them.
We have one here and one on...
Two, three, four here. Four here. Two, two diesel, two gas, right?
Well, one's, one's a split tank, one's a split. Yeah. And actually, those tanks actually support our generators too, so, yeah.
Which is why, just sidelined, that's why we put the tank up by the generators, because the tanks, the bottom of the generators will only run it for like 14 hours, so a long...
Monos.
Someone is up here with a caddy going from our pump down by the old service garage, pumping it into there, wheeling it up here, then hand cranking it into the generators, and we just felt that in a disaster type scenario, we didn't have anybody to do that.
Right.
It's a fourth step.
Was that back when you started? Or no, that was a horse involved?
Just adding to my retirement fund.
So, back to page two. We're gonna need to add a little bit to contracted services for Kyle.
So, who uses that?
Wow.
That column is Kyle?
Uh, yes.
Only Kyle?
Only Kyle.
So, for the 65 or whatever it was to the rec center?
There's a lot that's not just that.
Right.
We, our upgrades are, are fast. Everything has been, probably having 80s, 90s technology.
Yeah, I mean, the budgeted amount was only, you know, 600, so...
Oh, yeah, you can only spend it...
Yeah. I mean, lots of cover, so...
The 260 looks high, but the actual dollar amount isn't that high.
Right, right, the dollar amount's up there. So, page three. I mean, wages, if you looked at the wages, are all in pretty good shape. And we, I did calculate how many pays, we've had 13 pays through June 30th. Sometimes, because we enter on a cash basis, so I just wanted to make sure that how many pays we've had through June, and it's actually half of the 26 that we have for the year. So, I'm very, very happy with where the wages are overall. I don't think there's any other negatives that I was concerned about.
On page four, contracted services.
Yeah.
We're almost to the top.
Uh, page four, okay.
5410.
Yep.
As well as 5500. They're almost to 100%.
But look at that...
Do we have to add money?
No, look at, I mean, the, the top one and the 170, look at the encumbrance of 24,000, that's not, you know, not spent to date yet, so that's almost, that's more than half of the budget. So, some of those, let me see, what's there?
It says some encumbered on 5410 is 1,296,000.
I know, but look at the encumbrance of 24,516, so that, we haven't spent that yet. So, we can spend that for future bills that come in.
Why would you show them that it has 98% used?
It's encumbered.
You missed the explanation to Jessica earlier. This, this spreadsheet takes year-to-date expense plus the encumbrance, which you haven't spent, and then compares those, those two totals to your budget. So, a lot of the contracted services are for the full year, so a lot of those encumbrances are, you know, that 24,000 will be spent over the next six months.
So, you're saying there will be additional dues?
No, it's not.
It's for... If you paid for them for the calendar year, is what you're saying, right?
I budgeted for the calendar year with the purchase order instead of doing, no, that's right, so...
Plus if the Rita retainer is over already, over budget?
Well, the Rita retainer, we got the refund in June, so what you do with the refund from, what they do is they charge it 3% through the year, and then in June, they give you, what, what, after they do their allocation of their expense, they give you that amount back. That, because they base upon how often they had to work on Macedonia versus every other community they, they service. So, you reduce your expense in that month. So, we're getting a refund of like 1.7% on 3%, so we're getting that refund in total, but it got posted to June. So, you'll see that I think that month-to-date is actually a negative. What page are you on?
The bottom of page two.
Page what?
The last, the last line of page two.
Oh, you're on still page two. Yeah, see how it's negative 22 year-to-date?
Mm-hmm.
That's why.
All right. We only have like five minutes.
Yeah.
Is there any, any questions that are burning?
I don't think so.
Now that we know why everything's 99%, we hope that everything's either basically 90% or 50%.
Well, I'd be concerned if, like when Jan pointed that out, I'd be concerned if there wasn't an encumbrance in that line, and it was 99%, but then you look to the encumbrance, and if there's a large encumbrance compared to the budgeted amount, then I feel more comfortable that, that mine is gonna not need any adjusting for the rest of the year. And I look at this, you know, you guys get it monthly, I look at it weekly. So, you know, when I send out those emails monthly, just, you know, feel free to contact me if you see anything. Now that you know kind of how to read it, I'll send the same type of report each month. Again, the, the wages, you know, that's 70% of our overall budget anyways, so everybody's right. And you, you can't, I don't create a PO for wages, so this is actual to actual. You know, like how Jan's reading the lines, there's no encumbrance for wages, so if there was a wage line that was 98%, I'd be concerned. Okay?
So, my only concern, those was gonna call you about, was do we see, are we starting to feel the pain of the cost of services and goods going up, anything from gas to just consumable things? And do we see a downside on revenue coming from lower income taxes from people losing jobs or not having jobs?
I don't think so. Our revenue is up, our municipal income tax is up because wages have to, you know, everybody's increasing their wages to get people to work.
So, there's nothing that you've seen that would say that we need to take some type of proactive action?
Right.
To this point, when you see those monthly, when you get those reports, you would definitely see that trend, if it's moving up or down.
Right.
And believing if it's starting to trend far down, we'd all be having a different conversation.
Yeah, if I didn't have that large encumbrance at the end of last year for fuel, which was probably about 50,000 left to, to be spent this year.
Yeah.
Then, that would probably be the only line that we would need to adjust for this year so far.
Because that will eventually catch up.
Well, hopefully, it's starting to trend down.
True.
But not, not to $2.65 though.
Right.
All right. Thank you. And, and I do have detail of contracted services if anybody would like to see that, so...
Director Van.
Thank you very much. And thank you for handling it.
Like I said, I, you know, I didn't grow up here, so I don't know all the street names, and it kind of helps me know where the boundaries are, and actually, we've been looking at changing our entry signs anyways, so it helps to get out to the community instead of just sitting behind my desk. You know, it's only one day a month, so...
If that.
If that. Well, we have a council meeting every month.
Could be true.
No, I enjoy seeing the community, understanding where Island Road is, or Twinsburg Road, or...
Can you go visit all your tips?
Yeah, where all, yeah, all my tips. Yeah, I see.
I was gonna say, I did that one, I did that tip.
Yeah, you'll probably see three more tips on the agenda before the end of the year, if they opt them out.
Oh, yeah.
Bash if they decide to break ground, but I don't see anything happening there yet. And then space, place.
Place.
Yeah. Yeah, he's tip man too.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
What was all your tips, Josh?
Oh, he asked me, are we tipping this, or are we tipping that?
Teamwork.
Teamwork. Thank you.
All right, you're gonna be number, you're gonna be first up on our agenda here, so you've got one more minute.
Should I holler for you guys?
So, ordinance 42, first of all, welcome back for the, interrupting everyone's summer to have a little council meeting before August. Good to see everyone. Ordinance number 42, the One Ohio Fund, service.
Thank you, this is required. We have to establish this to track the money that we're gonna be receiving for the whole We have to establish this to track the money that we're gonna be receiving for the OPW settlement. I think I emailed you guys the MOU. What can you spend? Or maybe I have it yet.
No.
Okay, I do have it and I can send it to you.
Do you have anticipation of how much?
About a hundred and six thousand.
Keep waiting.
They finalized it. It's about a hundred and six thousand, I jump.
Does the city have plans for how we want to spend it? Do we want to have a special meeting with council about how we want to do it? Do you want to come, the administration want to come up with some ideas first?
We're, we're gonna have a greater conversation and then we'll bring something to you guys through your perusal and we'll talk at that time. Because we didn't really know the amount yet until we had something somewhat concrete.
Five hundred and six thousand.
That's a lot more than I thought it was.
But there's like a fifty-page synopsis of what you can do and what you can't do, so we're trying to read through that and split it.
I thought it was.
That hundred and sixty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw a, like news article.
Yeah, fifty-seven thousand.
When did they say?
Maybe it's something else. Distributing it?
Yes.
Let's see.
I mean, that tells us how much time we have. They have, it took so long to get to this part.
Yeah.
It did, yeah.
I've been sitting at a thought of me still have time, so.
I know, we'll receive, we'll receive the first half before the end of this year.
That, that was more than question. Are they gonna show up this year?
So we're okay on one, two, three on this, folks? I'm good?
Yeah, because if we don't, we can't take the loss.
It'll email you, the MOU, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be easy to spend, yeah.
Yeah. Are they putting restrictions on what you can spend on?
Lots of restrictions. It's fifty pages.
Yeah.
I have to.
It all has to be related.
I have no prevention.
What are they talking about now?
Basically prevention and treatment.
Because I know they've waited back and forth and so much, it's like.
There's six pages of what you can potentially spend on it.
Okay.
I'll send it to you guys.
All right, uh, resolution forty-three, Ohio Public Works.
Yeah, sure. Uh, this is to authorize our funding, our application for funding assistance to Ohio Public Works Commission, which we do each year. Uh, this is Pave Walters Road, which, uh, for those of you who aren't familiar, is a road in the extreme southwest corner of the city. Uh, in fact, we share the road fifty percent with Northfield Center Township as our city limits go right down the yellow line.
Can one of you move? Because I haven't seen that road yet.
If I miss a foot, it's out.
Yeah. Just make a left instead of a right.
It's Northfield Center already. Submitted there.
Oh, so we submit on their behalf, each joint application, so we're the lead. Uh, and they have signed their cooperation agreement to cooperate with us and allow us to be the lead. Uh, so if funded and if it goes forward, it's a fifty-fifty split on the cost of the project. Uh, and the only other thing of note is that this is actually after the fact legislation. The deadline for the application that could be submitted was last Friday. Of course, we've been on summer recess and OPWC knows that, so they accept after-the-fact legislation, which is we're doing tonight.
And we're only do, is Hudson doing their part?
No, we'll stop it. But that's interesting. Yeah, just us and Northfield.
That's actually Hudson on this side of Boston Heights on this side.
It's a Ford municipality road.
There's a four corners location.
This is the round.
They're coming back from Hudson.
Oh.
I've never understood, where do you live by here?
You live on the north.
Up here.
Yeah, I'm over here.
Oh, you're in that one?
Yeah.
Never understood why they built this where they're right behind the railroad track, but that's just.
Is that the part of Boston Heights?
Gorgeous houses.
All right, so everyone, one, two, three on this?
Well, you might as well, it's already done.
By section one, there's some language that you're ratifying any actions taken by the city previously, so.
Do we need to, should we read them through the second letter as?
No.
No, no, okay. Your call. You're the boss. Go long.
Not that long.
Your second.
All right, forty-four, disposition of municipal property. This was for the service department.
Two thousand, two thousand four sterling and two thousand five sterling. And the total, two thousand eight Ford F-250. So those are the ones I mentioned during the finance meeting that we're gonna get together, Dan and I, and determine the market value with the mechanics and put a minimum on job deals.
We've already replaced these, or ordered the replacement, didn't we?
Mm-hmm, we waited two years. We had our, our versatile trucks.
Got the two F-7s.
F-7s.
Yeah.
The fancy trucks that Mr. Wilson brought with him on his first day.
Hopefully they do well since it's gone up and down.
Yeah.
I think these are gonna do well.
I think they will.
Let me call the feds.
I, yeah, I think the other municipalities are gonna be hurt and looking for these trucks, so we should be pretty well.
It's gonna kill the house.
Yeah. All right, so forty-four, would we like to do one, two, three on that, folks? All right.
I know, let's think.
Okay. Uh, forty-five, Mr. Bash to the Parks and Rec Commission?
I don't know, it's, you know, just.
His, his.
It did this absolutely awesome thing, they were partners in the Cleveland Marathon.
Oh, yeah.
And at the end, you could order, and I didn't realize, so I got it from my daughter-in-law. It's a necklace that has Cleveland and it shows us your time and all that.
Okay, awesome.
It did a heck of a job, but it was nice to see them get out and get their names down.
Marathon, that's big.
More people now know who they are.
But it's nice to have him step up and I appreciate anyone who gone through it for any of our city committees.
And he's.
Would like to do three on that.
He's great person for this.
Next one. All right, this is the HVAC at the rec center, resolution forty-six. Mr. Chaddick?
Thank you, Councilmember Brandt. Uh, we are, we would like to open up to go to bid for our HVAC systems within the recreation center. Um, we, uh, JB and I have been talking with another couple of previous state that, I don't remember correctly, was Equalis.
Equalis.
Uh, that's who we were talking to initially. And believe it or not, we're not very satisfied with the numbers that they've provided. We definitely feel they're quite inflated and some of the lead times are tremendous. We're talking thirty to fifty weeks of lead time for some of these RTUs that we're talking about. Uh, we're, we're not sold on that and we have definitely heard different things from companies that are currently doing maintenance. So we would like to now, in the city's best interest, we feel it's to go to bid, see if we can get things tightened up a little bit and find a better number. And if we don't, of course, we'll come back to the table with you on that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, only because we've just personally gone through it as well as person. It took us almost six months.
Ten hours a week. There's a lot of really good companies in there.
Yeah, there's some really good, something good. Plus they can't get big equipment, and with this, this is bigger equipment.
Yeah.
And that's the, yeah, their supply chain is just, you know, good company.
We feel, we feel the state company is definitely loading up with a lot of engineering costs associated with, with what they're talking about.
Do you have a, a number in mind? A big round, number, roundup to?
Over seven digits.
It's, it's pretty big.
And we're also talking like six or seven units.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a substantial project.
But it'll be a complete.
Yeah.
Refresh of the HVAC system and, and so that's well needed. Yeah, they've, and they've never been made, it never been made.
They've been touched, they've been, the maintenance of them is best as we can bandy them, but keep in mind, they're, they're twenty-two, three years old.
So, yeah, councilmember, uh, Tully just asked that, so it is all original, so it would have actually, they're hitting twenty-three years old because they would have obviously been in the building a little bit earlier.
The warranty's only fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, and the maintenance in the last decade has not been spectacular, so you're welcome with that.
Well, Ken, best of luck with this. Very great kids. So I can tell you, it's cost every round there. Eight bucks.
All right, um, it would probably be helpful if we could do one, two, three on this to get the law rolling.
In anticipation, if you get a bid and you award it, that you will see work next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Even with the other company, it would have been next year.
No, that's what you're saying, if you don't get this, you don't have.
This gives us more options.
This is, this next one, just a simple, uh, reappointment of Mr. Iafreda to the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, Mr. Finley, you have that one. Yes, sir, Iafreda's been on the board for a while again.
Mr. Iafreda has been on for quite some time and has worked out very well, and I hear good things from the other members of the board about him. So I am presenting it today for him to be reappointed to the easier.
Thank you. And then on red, it got changed by John with the right ending, so we don't have to.
We don't have to.
Correct. Correct, Mark?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't read.
Resolution forty-eight, this is the rec center flooring. Mr. Chaddick?
Thank you, Councilmember Brandt. So you have, uh, the bid package booked that was sent to you guys that could have had details in it regarding the square footage and pricing and such for the installation. Uh, this bid had originally been put together with the scope of project to include all of the downstairs tiled flooring and expansion of the existing weight room rubberized floor. All of the stairwells were going to be changed, the tile is going to be flipped to the same as the main floor. And all of the stair treads are being replaced because they are also twenty-three years old and there is no maintenance we can do on it. It's replacement only. And then the final piece to this was, uh, the bridge upstairs is going to be turned into a rubberized floor as well to match the two code, the two, uh, pods that we have up there currently. Uh, the final piece to the puzzle was supposed to be the activity room, uh, so.
The activity room is the glass room between the entrance and the pool? Okay, if anyone didn't know.
Yeah, sorry.
That's great.
Guys probably aren't used to what they call the activity room. Um, so the activity room was supposed to be part of this, uh, within the scope of the project, it was written in. As we put this bid form together, I made an editing error and did not add the activity room to this. So for the purposes of this project, you guys are looking to propose, are going to look at today. It is everything except the activity room. We will have to once again go and repost the bid for just the activity room portion of this in the future. That's my editing error as we made this form. Uh, it was all in the scope of the project, so I'm going to do this copy and paste.
I don't think we would need to bid that out of the second meeting, we're in fifty thousand.
No.
Mr. Gennetti has an opinion on that.
To do just informal.
Hey, no. Mr. Gennetti.
Informal bidding.
This is the, the track.
This is not the track, we're working on a plan for the future for the track because all of this.
Project.
Yeah, so JB and I started working on this year, like I would say probably six, seven years after I got here. So we've been setting up for this.
We did the track and the big class five, and that can.
You know something?
Ten miles.
Can the flooring say that?
Wait, I, I can agree to that as long as council approves the expansion of the center out to the east to have the basketball court. She'll have the track.
We could, only because.
Mrs. Tully wants it done, let's do it.
If councilmember Tully wants it, I can make it happen.
It, it's.
With her approval, of course.
Ten miles around that track, and because you're constantly inside of your.
You say you run ten miles on that track?
Yep.
That's, is that making you dizzy? Gosh.
So in most.
It's like a hundred thirty.
Well, most tracks are quarter mile.
You go the same way.
Minimum, this is.
Yeah, you got it.
This was not even close.
So it'd be like a hundred and ten laps.
Yeah, a hundred and thirty. Yeah, a hundred and thirty.
Well, depending on which lane, yes, we'll give you a hundred and thirty.
Well.
I'm dizzy just thinking about it.
And I don't have it myself, so.
And if she likes, may I ask, Carter, left turn, left turn, left turn, left turn, it'll be fine.
So I'll just.
Speak one more and I'll.
All this being said, Mrs. Tully, we're gonna make an amendment because the first whereas clause does include the activity room.
Yep.
So you will be, uh, asking for an amendment just to remove that from the first whereas clause. And if it's not mentioned again, then the rest of it, so everything should be set with the, the editing here. Uh, and also that being said, does anyone have any questions about this flooring project?
Is there anything left open-ended that we would be at risk of having to deal with? From my email request to you, okay, and your response, some of these numbers don't match up with the original bid. And I'm just wondering that if we're going to be locked into, you know, the numbers are correct on the actual bid program rather than what you said? As a, as a clear legible view?
So just to be clear, I think what Councilman Ventura is saying, uh, the bid documents, he had questions on the legibility. The bid documents that the city received are the bid documents, those can't be modified after the bid opening. You asked for some clarification though, because it was handwritten, I think you're having some difficulty reading some of the handwriting. And let Director Chaddick know that, I believe Director Chaddick put together, um, basically a summary or a verbatim transcription. I'm not sure which, I think that's what you're asking about, Councilman Ventura.
I think you're saying that literally the numbers are not the same on the two documents.
I agree with you. Yes, so I guess my point is the numbers are only on the original documents submitted, that were controlled. So I'll let, I'll let Councilman Ventura finish.
Well, what is the total cost going to be then? Because there is no total on the original bid document.
Right, you have to do the math on it.
Yeah, but sixty-one, zero, seven, then you add the.
The total, the total cost of what is being proposed, I'm sorry, the total cost of what's been bid is the projected total at the bottom of that sheet that I sent you, which is the sixty-one thousand four hundred dollars. And then.
That's.
Obviously, that's, that's minus the activity room. So that is a total cost.
And what it adds is the construction dumpster that wasn't on the, on the original, that I can see. Because I did the math off of this, the numbers match.
Okay.
And it just adds the construction dumpster.
Yeah, we're cool. The number is like.
So the, like bid number one, the bid package, LPT package material proposed, it says Shaw Joy quotes. There's a dollar amount of there, forty thousand two twenty-five. But in the typed up version, nothing says forty thousand two twenty-five. So is that because you have to do some type of?
It's the, it's the joy LPT plus the four inch final coat that adds, that adds up to?
Okay.
Forty-two twenty-five.
Okay. Yeah, and I think when it came to legibility, my concerns also went on to the last page where it says, any qualifications to bid materials, timeframe of completion? I can read about forty percent of what was written on this one. And I have no idea what exclusions this bid is saying they can or can't do, and we're bound to what they wrote on there. And I think if you ask any person with an open mind to read these sentences, they wouldn't be able to interpret with a hundred percent certainty what the bid says their exemptions are, what, could you? Because I can't comprehend half of what's written in that.
Last page.
Very last page says, any qualifications to bid materials, timeframe of completion?
Yes, yeah. This quote does not cover activity room as it was.
Included in the bid.
Included in the bid, as it was not included in the bid book.
Right. So, yeah. But what about the next one?
And that's what says.
This book does not include removal of existing floor tile.
Yeah.
Add six thousand eight hundred if necessary.
Do you feel comfortable with everything like that? It may be because of copying.
I've also been looking at Facebook too far.
And you know it, right?
So there's a distinct difference, but you guys have been seeing this, I, I total, total respect to you guys, you've been seeing it for what?
Don't, don't object, I just, what I just look at it as, is like.
Let's go back to, let's go back to the last twenty-four hours, because if you look at the time that I sent you that email.
Right.
That's about the time I got, I got a chance to sit down after reading everything else for the evenings.
And it's also, I asked the questions.
Yeah.
Of the contractor.
Yeah, so he knows the context of it.
So I asked the chief coach. So I guess I feel comfortable with it. I wouldn't have brought it to you guys if I didn't.
I get that, and I'm not nitpicking you or the form or anything, I'm just looking at it as.
Well, I didn't take the form already because I messed it up.
And just so you guys know, this is, this is Dr. Chaddick's first bid on his own. Where he came from before, and he explained this to Parks and Rec Commission a couple of times. He was not, so he's familiar with doing the work to prepare it, but he's not actually familiar with the actual literal process of finishing. So this is, this is his first time, so if things were a little clunky for us, this is, this is give them a mall again.
I'm not criticizing the city at all in this, I'm, I'm criticizing the handwriting.
So the next one, the next one he prepares, hopefully this trillion-dollar HVAC project will be.
It is a backup normally, we have a bid and we award a bid and accept the center into a contract.
Which would spell these terms out.
Would, yeah.
That was gonna be my caveat.
Type written.
Yeah, and then Mr. Gennetti can take the handwritten one and the contract and he can, he can look at those and be like, this doesn't matter. can, he can look and go and be like, this doesn't matter.
That was my concern is if the city ever got into a dispute with whoever ends up getting a bid, does it turn into, well, what did it, what did the handwriting actually say?
What you just said actually.
All my concerns.
Well, then let me give you the second lesson learned that I already talked, Samantha Edgar is our marketing and special events coordinator, and she is also the one that helps me put marketing material together.
Okay.
So the second thing we talked about is she is the one that helped me post everything. This form next time is going to be a fillable PDF, not get.
Sorry.
Again, learning as we go.
The contractor probably had to find a pen to fill it in.
He's like, what is this?
Looks like he uses a pencil.
He had to go to Kinko's just to get it to you.
All right, you satisfied all my concerns, thank you.
All right. Just one more question, are we having the existing receipt to remove?
Yes. Yeah, and it's because it's as bad as what's out here, and when we had a service worker walk around and just lift up the tile, the question I was asked, is this going to last for twenty years underneath brand new flooring you're putting down to the community, especially you have John right?
Valid question, thank you.
And I said no. So, yeah.
Valid question.
Thank you.
Just so.
We needed that full explanation.
Good.
Just one thing to add, the project out here begins tomorrow, so I'm trying to not plan to be in here if you don't have to. We planned it around the weekend just for that fact. End of this meeting.
Did I say, did I hear he's giving a video on employees today?
What about this? Start the floor. Send your lunch tomorrow.
That's why they're going to begin on this one. They're going to work through the weekend and go that way.
Sorry, John, they're not going upstairs.
I don't think.
Just. You know, upstairs.
I never forget about this meeting.
All right, folks, one, two, three on that then, because that kind of really needs to be.
I no longer have any.
It's already there. Fantastic, thank you, Mr. Chatick, for all your explanation. All right, we have several motions over here. We have disinfectant wipes, Mr. Ventura, Mr. Finley. There, we amended our rules a little bit in the Parks and Recreation Commission once we got the, once we passed that virtual meeting thing, so we just want to make sure that council agrees with them. And then also hearing requests to the liquor control, you guys are all apprised of that, right? Basically, there's a company that applied for a liquor permit in Macedonia which no longer owns property around the business of Macedonia. We tried to get it just done and liquor control hasn't done anything about it, so we need to, if we don't object, they'll just get it, right?
They never responded.
So Mr. Hoover's been excellent about contacting liquor control and keeping on top of it. They indicated that it would be canceled, and correct me if I'm wrong, they indicated it'd be canceled, the application, and they never did it. We requested a thirty day extension of the time for council to submit a request for a hearing, hoping that they would take their administrative action by now, but they haven't. So I recommend the motion to request a hearing just in case they don't get around.
They kind of forgot that they haven't been here for years.
No one's the state and they're very busy.
So and I asked, I asked Mr. Goodetti what, what it means to request a hearing, I just want to sign us all up for a hearing, but.
You got to show up.
Yeah, nothing to do with us, Mark, and Chief Paul will take care of it.
So it's basically a hearing for them to show up and talk about it. They can have, so we go ahead and say poops, we don't want it anymore.
A hearing would really be an opportunity for the city to voice their objections, which are limbed by statutes, but we'd object our, insert our objections during the hearing and then the division would make a determination whether to issue the.
Yeah.
The kind of be canceled, the meeting and the hearing be canceled via, they submit, oh, I messed up.
Does the hearing need to come up?
Um, it's, we can request that it be in the county seat down at some account.
Is it at the restaurant, wherever it may be?
Would probably be a common place.
I don't know where they would.
All right.
I couldn't find.
So we'll be doing that, and then we will be having executive session afterwards. All right? Ready? Great.
Great.
Okay, we got five moments.
Go, go team bench.
Go team bench.
Hello and welcome to the July twenty-eighth council meeting. It is seven thirty PM. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Ms. Brand.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Now I ask American Legion Chaplain Tom O'Brien to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
With bowed heads, let us pray. Almighty God, we pray thee to guide our guidance for our elected officials so they may work in a harmonious and honest manner. Give our elected officials the courage to work together for the common good of our community and to provide us with the services that are necessary for all of us to enjoy. We ask thee, Almighty God, that you watch over our police and fire personnel, for they are our first responders to crises that may arise anytime, day or night. Keep them safe, so at the end of their workday, they may return unharmed through their home and loved ones. We further ask Almighty God, that you keep a watchful eye over all our city employees, those civil servants whose work is done for the benefit of our community. And in closing, oh God, our mercy, we ask for thy blessing and comfort for our neighbors who may be suffering from mental or physical disabilities. Cheer them and bring them thy blessing of health and happiness. Amen.
Amen.
And now, please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Okay, next up on the agenda is a proclamation, I can't speak today, proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month, and it reads, whereas parks and recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Macedonia. And whereas parks and recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas parks and recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas parks and recreation programming and education activities such as out of school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. Whereas parks and recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives have designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Now therefore, be it resolved by Mayor Nicholas Molnar that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Macedonia. Feather in your cap, Mr. Chatick, good stuff. Okay, next up is the approval of minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Thursday, June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments, we have none this evening, so we'll go to correspondence from the clerk.
No correspondence, sir.
We'll move right into pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number forty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have ordinance number forty-two, twenty-twenty-two, for its first, second, and third reading, by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance establishing the local One Ohio Fund to be used to track receipt and expenditures of revenue received from the One Ohio opioid litigation settlement and confirming the expenditure of such revenue consistent with the One Ohio settlement.
Director Goodetti?
So the title to this piece of legislation really says it all, this is the city's portion of the opioid settlements distribution that's occurring throughout the state of Ohio. It's approximately a hundred and six thousand dollars, and it can only be expended for the purposes set forth in the MOU, which council has previously decided to participate in.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I ask that we pass, and post according to law, ordinance number forty-two, twenty-twenty-two, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? ordinance number forty-two carries. Resolution forty-three.
Mayor, I offer resolution number forty-three for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to take such steps necessary to apply for funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission, District Eight Public Works Committee, program year thirty-six for the Walters Road resurfacing project.
Director Gelati?
Yeah, thank you. This is our annual OPWC funding application. This is to authorize our application to pave Walters Road. It is a joint application, and if funded, would be a joint project with our neighbor's Northfield Center Township. And as discussed earlier, this is actually after the fact legislation due to timing and schedule of the application deadline and our summer recess.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number forty-three and post the same according to law. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution forty-three carries. Resolution number forty-four.
Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number forty-four, twenty-twenty-two, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the disposition of certain municipal property by the city of Macedonia in accordance with City of Macedonia codified ordinance section one twenty-one dot zero five and Ohio Revised Code section seven twenty-one dot one five.
Director Wilson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the, to authorize the sale of three vehicles that have been replaced. It's two large, two and a half ton dump trucks, one's in oh four and one is in oh five, and one, two thousand and six F-two-fifty pickup truck that is also in poor condition.
Total, to be clear on the last one.
To be clear on the last.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt a resolution number forty-four, twenty-twenty-two, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution forty-four carries. Resolution number forty-five.
Mayor, I'd like to present our resolution forty-five, twenty-twenty-two, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Donnie Bash to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
So I made the mistake once of calling you Bosch, and I will never do that again because many people, and you know, I've known you guys for a long time in the family, and many of you have been, I know it's Bash now, so I will never make that mistake again. And thank you for being here with us this evening, and thank you for potentially being a part of this commission. Hopefully it's passed tonight and you'll become a member of it, so we'll know that in a moment here. Any other discussion? What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution forty-five, twenty-twenty-two, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Welcome. Thank you so much for volunteering, we really appreciate it, and we, the next meeting is August twenty-second, it shifted. So I don't know if you'll still be here at the end of the meeting when I talk about it, but it's August twenty, it's Monday, August twenty-second, at the activity room at the Rec Center.
And did President Brand tell you you have to give a ten-minute speech now about your lifelong success?
Yeah, success. And what are your goals for the entire Parks and Recreation Department?
And you better talk about your wife, too. No, I'm kidding, thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Bosch has a great series, so.
Resolution forty-five carries. Resolution number forty-six.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution forty-six, twenty-twenty-two, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the director of Parks and Recreation to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the acquisition of new HVAC units for the city of Macedonia Recreation Center.
Uh, Mr., I'm sorry, Director Chatick.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this will give us the opportunity to go out for bid. Director Varis and I have been working for many months now going through the evaluation of our HVAC systems, as well as working with a state cooperative to try to see what opportunities were for us there. We weren't satisfied with the numbers that we got through that process, and we want to now seek bid opportunities to go out and see if we can find some more suitable financial numbers as well as lead times for some new systems. This will be to essentially replace the entire HVAC system within the recreation center.
Thank you.
Service Director Wilson's involved in our search as well.
Oh, yes, I am so sorry.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution forty-six, twenty-twenty-two, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution forty-six carries. Resolution forty-seven.
I'd like to offer resolution number forty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution confirming the reappointment by the mayor of Richard Iafreda to the city of Macedonia Board of Zoning and Building Code Appeals.
So his time was up, and this is the reaffirming him to the BZI. I had spoke to him and he said that he would like to continue on there, and from what I've heard from the other members of the board, that they would like to continue working with him as well, so I would appreciate a passage of this this evening. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution number forty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution forty-seven carries. Resolution forty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number forty-eight, twenty-twenty-two, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Environmental Flooring Group LLC for the city of Macedonia Recreation Center flooring remodel project.
Director Chatick.
Thank you, Mayor. This contract would give us the opportunity to move forward with flooring replacement in the Rec Center. Currently, our flooring is twenty-three years old, and we are looking at the first floor as well as the bridge, an expansion of the rubberized surface for the weight room, rubberized surface for the bridge, and getting our stairwells redone in the same tile that the front entrance would have, as well as new stair treads. So this would give us that opportunity. We're looking at a total for the project, of course, less the activity room. The total for the project would be sixty-one thousand four hundred dollars, and we have the Activity Room. The total for the project would be $61,400, and we have made the election that we were going to add in the removal of the existing tile flooring that's in, because we don't think it will adhere well enough over the next 20 years. So that would be an addition of $6,800 for a grand total of $68,200 to move forward with this project.
But the key to this, too, is that that floor is original to that building, which is now approaching 23 years old. And not only that, it's a very slippery surface, and in that type of athletic facility, you know, when people are sweating, you definitely don't want to have that moisture on the floor when you're doing exercises. Is there an amendment for this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the first where ask clause to remove the Activity Room as part of this project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we pass and post according to law Resolution Number 48-2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 48 carries. Any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept a donation by Valley Fire District of 36 cases of disinfectant wipes and an estimated value of $3,500 to the city's fire and police departments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended rules and regulations for attendance adopted by the Parks and Recreation Commission as presented to the council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other motions or legislative actions?
I'd like to make a motion to submit a hearing request to the Division of Liquor Control regarding permit applications, see new 6632805.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll move right into the mayor's report. So oftentimes, it pops up where the question comes of property owner responsibility, and there's been a lot of confusion specifically on tree lawns of a home. The tree lawn of a home is the homeowner's responsibility. The right-of-way, as it's called, is only our ability to go there and do work if needed. So if there was something that was an emergency, say, a limb was hanging and buses were hitting it, or delivery trucks were hitting it, that's an emergency in which we would go correct that problem. Ditches, culverts, and drainage areas, if it's within the right-of-way and it's something that the city would manage, that's something that we would go take a look at. But I want to be very clear in that it's homeowner's responsibility to trim their trees and their tree lawn, to maintain that. That is not city property. And that confusion's out there a lot. That also includes the sidewalks in front of your home. If you have popped-up sidewalks where they're sticking up really high, that's also the responsibility of a homeowner. That's not something that the city takes care of. So it kind of goes into that you don't put public dollars on private property. There are instances where that is applicable, but those are on a case-by-case basis, and they're pretty rare, to be honest with you. So I just wanted to be clear, because this question comes up more often than not of who's responsible for that area. So if you ever have a question about it, that you can call my office. We can call the service department. We'll definitely get an answer to anyone.
Can you do a quick summary of how, who maintains, and how to maintain ditches and driveway culverts underneath the driveways? How does that work?
So we will, the service department will replace the culvert underneath your driveway. It's kind of our side work when we have extra time. It's not something that we make urgent unless it's an emergency. You know, if there's something urgent, we'll go and address that. But essentially, the way that works is you buy the pipe, and we will dig it out and put the new one in for you. I believe to date, we're almost up to date with all the ones we have currently. Are we, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, there, I mean, we do have a list. There are a few on the books for the rest of this year, what we kind of predict we'll be able to do with the weather. But we have made the cutoff as far as taking any new ones. We're asking people to just call back in the spring, because there's only so much we can do with everything else that we have going on.
What about maintenance of ditches in your yard?
So within the ditch, if it's not an easement, it is your responsibility. This comes up a lot, too, where they say, oh, well, I'm flooding on the side of my house. You know, the city needs to come fix it. Well, I can tell you that nine times out of 10, it's really not something that the city would address, and it's not something that we can, we can help with. If you have a question about it, by all means, we will tell you. And Mr. Gelati and I spend a lot of time talking with residents when that question comes up, but it's a case by case. It's hard to tell.
What about ditches? I'm talking about, this isn't in your neighborhood, but in my neighborhood, we have ditches in the tree lawn, so that is the easement and the city does do ditch clean.
So we do do ditch cleans. And to be clear, a lot of folks say, well, you know, you dug it out, you draw it the right depth, you didn't do this right. And it all goes through engineering and the service department. So they will determine what the needs are based on that. It's not something that we just take lightly, and if there's a problem, we're going to address it. We always do. So we do do ditch cleans, but it's on an as-needed basis. I mean, we've had some folks that just wanted it cleaned out, and that's just not how it works.
So but a resident can call the city and ask if they haven't looked at?
If you have a concern about it, by all means. We've never not went and looked and assessed the situation and said whether we can do something or not. A lot of times, like I said, maybe it doesn't need anything. I mean, there's a lot of questions about the pitch and the way the water flows. But back to the driveway piece, if we, if you replace that, all we do is dig it out and put it back in. You are still responsible for putting the asphalt or concrete back in your driveway. The city is not going to do that. So I want to be very clear, and I think our code makes, well, it's in our code that you have to do that. So if we replace that, you have to replace the material that was there prior to.
The ditch walk that was just done on the mud by our service department, you don't own that property. I thought the railroad.
Which I'm not.
Under the bridge?
Well, that was.
Up to Northville. There were stones put in, which would help the flow of water, not impact our residents. But we did that. Why didn't we have the railroad?
If it was on city property, we took care of it. I don't think that was the railroad, was it? I'm confused now.
At the railroad property. Entrance? Is that what you mean?
Are you talking about the entrance to the railroad?
The entrance to the railroad.
It's actually going to go over there. On the right-hand side, it goes up towards Northville.
Right. So you're still within that right-of-way. Anything next to that road's within that right-of-way, and that's.
It was the same, the same situation as a homeowner. They purchased the pipe. It's the exact same situation. We did the work. And that also, I believe Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it prevented water from eating away at the road. It helped save our road by doing it. So is that right?
There again, he recognized that there was an issue.
Right. I understand why it was done. I'm not sure why. We did it. If we're telling homeowners, we don't do their ditches.
We do, we do do their ditches.
We do do ditch cleans. That's part of our job, to make sure that the water's flowing properly. That's part of what we have to do. That's within the right-of-way, and we want to make sure we're not flooding people. So that's part of what we do. Whether it's a business or a homeowner, that's still our responsibility.
But as a homeowner, tonight, so I wonder where, and we can talk about this later, but what constitutes is in the right-of-way ditch versus not?
Well, it's a matter of whether or not the ditch needed it, too. Sometimes, sometimes the ditch.
Just to be real clear about it, the only instance the city can perform work on private property if a determination has been made that there's a negative impact to the public, essentially. So if it's affecting multiple properties, for instance, if it's affecting an entire street, if there's a significant substantial impact on the storm system, in those instances, the city would have the justification to come in and perform that work. And if the project you're speaking of is, I'm correctly thinking of it, that determination was made in that instance.
Well, I'd like to know more about that, because I'm not sure which one you're referring to. So if you can forward it to me.
That's one of those. It's previous. Service Department.
I'd like to look at that. Forward me something on that, so I can take a look. But again, it's still our responsibility to make sure the water flows. I kind of went off the tracks here, but if there's a problem and it's affecting the regional system, I shouldn't say the region, because that's a whole other ballgame. That's, I don't even want to get into that tonight. I'm not doing that. But if it affects the system and the way the water flows, we will work to correct that. And I can tell you that where we stand today with our engineering department and our service department, we've done a lot of work to rectify a lot of the water problems that we've had in the past. And thank God, we jumped all over them, and we're able to correct those. So there's a lot of work put into that.
Every house, annual RSD, the one that you pay, if you wonder, I'm still paying this, but they're the bigger picture.
So that's my little synopsis of water flow.
I'm sorry to sidetrack you. I just wanted to let people know the type of things that the service department can and will do, and where on your property. And so you started with trees. I thought ditches and culverts kind of played into that.
The next on my list is the Veterans Memorial Bathroom. I'm sure Director Wilson will touch on this, but I'm very proud of the work that's been taking place there. Believe it or not, we're doing a lot of that work in-house. And we have some very talented gentlemen that are working on that project, because we did get a quote for someone to come out and do that. And the quote that we got, I'm not going to throw the number out, but it was the cost of a house. So it's nice to know that we have people that have the ability to do that work. And thankfully, Director Wilson's been able to hire a couple full-time people to get our staffing closer to full, full status. I mean, we're really close, and I'm sure you can address that later. But it's nice to have guys that know how to do that work and get it done and do it right. So I commend all the work that they've been doing over there, and I'm anxious to see that come to completion. So hopefully soon. Next thing on my list is Macedonia was also named Tree City again for the 14th year in a row. It's kind of a nice little thing that requires a lot of work, and Mr. Wilson got indoctrinated into that pretty quick, but I think you're already somewhat familiar with that. So it's nice to have that designation again. The barn in Longwood Park, I'm sure Director Chaddick will be talking about. We had a barn next to the lake where they utilized that for programs. That barn was dilapidated, that's probably the best way to describe it, and rotted out. They put a nice new barn in there that they can utilize for different programs that we utilize. We have for the children in the summertime, and I'm sure there's a whole slew of things that I'll leave that for you to talk about. Next on my list was manpower, because we want to talk about the service department. Just like everything in this world right now, and I'm going to be very clear, because members of this council and what we're experiencing in the city have been asking a lot about a lot of different things. And all I can ask all of you to do is have patience. Manpower is not right anywhere in the world. We've had a lot of calls about telephone poles, sidewalks, other entities that have to do things and work within this community. I can tell you that the responsibility of someone that I've had recently are not on the city doesn't mean that we're not going to try and help facilitate that. But when I'm being asked constantly the same question about what's going on with it, believe me, the city's working on it. And if the people of this community see that, bring it to our attention. We will try and help you any way we can. But a lot of times, we're relying upon other entities to solve their own problems. And if it's something that's a safety factor, and we did have one recently that Mrs. Tully brought to my attention, I had to spend an inordinate amount of time working on this to get something resolved. And finally, when I started to throw the safety question out there, we have resolved. But not all of those are safety-related, and I try to keep our people on task. And a lot of these things are just going to be cleaned up over time because of manpower. It's going to be delayed. There's nothing I can do about that. So I want to be very clear about that.
The manpower in this situation was not our city. It actually was the phone company, because telephone poles are not owned by the city. They're usually owned by the electric company, and then all the users of it pay. I know that because of my years in phone service. It took us all the way, the first one around several years ago. We had a law department involved. This time, I went to the mayor because I heard from a ton of people and said, who's got it? And they came back with, well, we have people on vacation, and we don't have enough in park. As the mayor reminded them, this has been months, not a week or two. And the way the pole was leaning and the storms that were coming through, we would have lost power to an entire development. So I thank you for the persistence of the city. The other one is there's a sidewalk on 82. So you, as a resident, will say, well, that one was never fixed. That also took numerous months because of the pole work that they did. They dug up the sidewalk on 82, kind of just come around and delayed, having it done, shall we say. I told the mayor, they fixed it today, believe it or not. Did you take that piece I sent you?
I did not.
There was a piece of concrete, the exact shape to the state of Ohio. And I said, well, at least go up there and get that. That would be a great pole. But thank you. That, again, it was months and months, but they don't have the pole. Please let them come back.
So I guess the point of what I was trying to illustrate is that we will work on these things, and you've got to give me some time to work on them. So if you want to know what's going on, if I have progress, I will identify that and let council know of that. So I'm only asking for your patience in that moving forward. I've been asked multiple times about what's going on on Freeway Drive. It's the Space Place Expansion, I guess we would say. And Mr. Rodick will talk about more of that in his report. Second last thing I have is I want to wish Mr. Varis a happy birthday, although it was on the 24th, but I wanted to make sure I said happy birthday to you publicly, because it was a special one, I hear.
No, 59.
21, final one?
And while I'm on that track, yesterday was my wife and I's 20th anniversary, and you kind of, you blink and you go, wow, what just happened?
20 years.
It's kind of crazy, and I'm not saying that for any recognition from anybody, but it was, it was kind of a big number for both of us. It was a little, we look back at the wedding pictures, and I'm going, wow, that was us. So thank you to my wife for putting up for me for 20 years, and I built her 25. I love her to death, and God bless her.
20 years ago. I was in 3rd grade.
Thanks for that. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted. Put the cell phones down and drive the car. They're very dangerous. Concentrate on the road. All right, next up is committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission, we didn't have a meeting in July, but we had a meeting in June. We talked about the flooring, the barn, all the things that I'm sure Director Chaddick will talk about. We finalized amending our meeting rules to kind of give us some guidance for what should happen when we have a virtual meeting, if that were to come up in the future due to the new charter amendment that allows us to do that. And we also had a good overview of the Spirit of Macedonia Festival, and we would like to give our thanks to Parks and Rec Department, the Service Department, the Police and Fire Departments for all the work that, I know it seems like it was eons ago, but everybody put in a ton of work. Maybe you still have blisters from that. I don't know. But you guys did a ton of work, and everyone, you know, from what we could see, it went out without a hitch. So that was a ton of work, and we really appreciate it. Our next meeting is going to be Monday, August 22nd. Typically, meetings are Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month. But we all, you know, decided that we had some scheduling conflicts, so it's going to be Monday, August 22nd, and we'll welcome Mr. Bash to that one. And we'll keep on moving. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move into department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor mentioned, we have been able to hire some new, great employees, despite the fact that there are staffing shortages everywhere, and everyone's struggling with that. This week, started a new administrative assistant, Tara Dietz. We're excited to have her on. She has a lot of experience, and she will be a, we're going to have a front-desk, public-facing type of public service employee to be able to greet the public and answer questions and still answer the phone and do other things. But that's kind of a vision that I have, and the mayor has, that we can be of better service to the public. That way, we've had some, we have had some success in the service department. We have two new hires, Mark Frank and Ryan Gura, and they've been great assets to the department in the last several weeks. I don't want to take any credit for the new barn from Director Chaddick or anything, but I do want to give props to the service, the service department that did an amazing job of building a base and some walls. And you'll see it if you're out there, but they did an incredible job in short amount of time. You know, we're pressed for time always, and we always have 100 things going on. So I did want to say something about that.
Wait, who found that barn, by the way?
It's my turn.
Thank goodness for my pickleball trip up the minner.
We wait our turns.
I want to touch on the vets bathroom, and the mayor talked about it a little bit, but just like you said, we have some incredible talent. The guys are doing a great job. That bathroom's, I mean, if you look at it, you think, you may think like, what are they doing? But all of that beginning work is really time-consuming, really difficult. All that underground work, and all the utilities, and planning all that, figuring that out. You know, it's, you don't see it right now, but I think the rest of it will go quick, and then you'll see, you know, the roof's on the next thing you know. So the floor is being poured Monday, I've been told, as long as the weather holds out and everything goes well. So that's exciting. You know, after the floor, I think it'll move quick, hopefully. And then lastly, we had a shred event, and I have a few numbers on that. 388. I can't read my handwriting. Household, households and businesses participated, 25,000 pounds of paper shredded and 640 pounds of cardboard. So there was a lot of recycling that took place on that day. Great for the city.
Thank you. End of report. Director Gelati.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Since we last met, Highland Road was repaved. I think we all enjoy the results of that road, Highland Road, East of Valley View. And then there's seven other roads around the city, part of our annual road program, in which asphalt paving work is currently taking place. We expect that to be wrapped up here over the next one to two weeks. End of report.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on that. I'd like to commend Mr. Gennady and yourself. I never say your last name right.
Gelati.
Joey Ice. Joe, Joe G. And the mayor with the administration, there wasn't as much disturbance with traffic as everybody thought there was going to be. I believe that went pretty smoothly. I travel that a lot, back and forth to work, and it just, it was very easily to still get through that intersection, and to get to Shepherd Grove, which is what I take if I'm going straight home.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it. Yeah, we were bracing for some heavy traffic delays. Thankfully, our contractor, Roniak Paving, they did a nice job for us. They worked with us. We were able to reduce the number of days in which there was really any traffic impacts out there. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like I'm going to be a blast to the past here, because everybody already talked about my stuff. But hey, I'm not opposed to talking about it again. Summerfest was a lot of fun. We had really a huge amount of staff and a ton of hours that were put into that weekend. So I just want people to truly understand. It was such a great group to be able to bring the whole city together. I want to thank Director Wilson in getting all of the service crew out there. Those guys, if you knew the amount of stuff they did for the week and a half leading up to Summerfest, you would have a whole new appreciation for the event itself. Literally, Wednesday and Thursday, they were working all night long to do some of the preparation work just for the parking situations that were going on because of rain that came in that was unexpected. So a lot of great things there. Thanks to police and fire for being there with us, the duration, obviously handling a couple issues that took place. Service Department, Parks and Rec Department, just a great time for everybody to get together. And I want to just again reiterate the way our city pulls together to make an event like this take place. It really takes everybody. And then thanks to my fellow directors, Director Wilson and Director Varis on the barn project, as well as Supervisor Zernak. We got to take a little field trip to see what this barn looked like, and it is, it's really spectacular. It looks absolutely awesome. I've received multiple phone calls at the rec already. People driving by, just asking, where do we get it from, commending us on such a great job. The service department did a spectacular job of putting in what was supposed to be temporary railing that we're now just going to leave up, because it looks so nice that we don't want to take it down. Parks crew went in there and did some great landscaping, so it is really looking good to go along with the new dock that's in. So we got a lot of great things going on out at Longwood Park. Back to the rec, Maintenance Week is going to be August 15th, so that week, the rec center will be closed to reopen the following Monday. We would like to get the flooring project moving. I can't promise that, because it depends how long it takes. I can't promise that because it depends how long it takes to get the supplies once we get our contract signed. So that's part of the intent for Shutdown Week as well as draining the pools and doing some acid washing to those and general maintenance throughout the facility. Couple of events to leave you with is Touch a Truck will be taking place August eleventh. And since we, since we have no council that day, everybody can go check out Touch a Truck in the rec parking lot. A lot of our service vehicles will be there as well as police, fire, and we have a couple other surprises that I don't want to announce and ruin the upcoming surprise for you guys. Fall Fest will be September seventeenth in Longwood Park, four-thirty to nine-thirty. So we look forward to seeing everybody there. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that was a good field trip that we had. There was a site that had a bunch of different ones that we walked through and came upon that one that ended up with, so that was a good trip. Just want to remind the residents that the due date for filing the refund has passed. However, we still take returns for any resident that has an extension with Rita. So if you have an extension with Rita, we will honor that extension date. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. As you probably have seen out in the community, we have our crews out doing the hydrant flushing. And once again, we got a late start because we had no workers, but they're working as diligently as they can. And just please give them some room to work. Do not drive through a stream if it's going across the road because it will in fact damage your car. The other, other exciting thing we have going on is there's now a roof on the walls for our new Station Three over Northfield Center. So we have a tentative move-in date of November first, so. End of report, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. Early August, all the Nordonia Hills Police Departments will be participating in active shooter drills at the high school. Thanks to Dr. Clark and Casey Wright for helping organize it. We're getting numerous officers from the SWAT team out to assist with this training, so there will be very little downtime and a lot of training. So that will be first week of August. If you see a lot of police cars at the high school, it's training. That's all I have, Mayor.
Make sure you put a blurb out on our Facebook and website on that too, because I know those calls will come in and you know that as well. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. HR is continuing toward, towards the city's first outdoor health fair. We are about six weeks out. We have about twenty-five vendors who have committed, so we're really excited about the turnout that we're gonna have. And we've been sending surveys out to employees to, um, secure their interest in whether they will be bringing children, spouses and so forth. We'll do our biometrics and we'll do our flu shots and everything, all as part of that outdoor, but we have lots of vendors who will be coming in and sharing the things that they will be bringing. We've got the arthritis foundation, Alzheimer's. I mean, we've really reached out and have been able to secure a lot of good vendors for it. So, um, working hard to get ready for it. End of report.
And I have to commend you because you put a tremendous amount of work into that and, and I know you worked with my assistant, Diane Augustine, to help you and when she can, but just understand, counsel, if you can come to this, please by all means do it because Mrs. Smith does a tremendous job with this and I think it's an amazing event that you put on, so thank you for all your hard work.
Please, please loop us in when you send out invitation emails and stuff.
Absolutely. We, we would encourage all of council. I mean, it is to our employees and council. Someday maybe we will be able to do a community-wide one.
Yeah.
But we're, I'm not quite ready for that, that event, yeah.
Do it, I'll pencil it in for next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Rodick.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may have mentioned earlier, the new project, Freeway Drive, it's Space Place. It's under the ownership and management of the Space Place Mini Storage Unit. It's about two tenths of a mile south of the, the site. This site's actually kind of like shoehorned in nicely. Be about twenty-seven thousand square foot of storage area. Present projects that we have ongoing, IHOP and Out to Love. Both of those are moving rather slowly. They're both dealing with supply chain issues and manpower issues. And just for, because Director Chaddick mentioned earlier about the RTUs and the delay in getting them, it's, it's been apparent that any metal or steel product is just delayed in getting out. I'm aware of other projects and other places where the RTUs are taking over, over a year to arrive to their site. So here we've had a problem with, with the range hoods, which are not that large, but they still take almost two months to arrive. That's why Wayback Burgers had opened up in such a delayed fashion. Target is moving along. If you've been in there, they've got a very systematic way of, of taking care of their spaces and renovating area by area. I think it's a fully a twenty-two week project. They're probably nearly halfway through that at this point. Panda Express, probably show that they've cleared the area, they've got the underground utilities in. They'll be starting the actual structure of the building within the next three weeks. And Dominion Energy Ohio, it's just, it's moving along in a workmanlike fashion over in Shepherd Road. I can see the steel framing for the, uh, the garage office structure that will be housing the trucks that will be there. They will not have any trucks actually stored outside. Any materials that will, that will be stored on the site will be stored behind that building, so they'll be all completely screened from the Shepherd Road area. They're also going to be adding some additional landscaping once they start closing in on the building of that project, which will probably be sometime towards fall of next year. Obviously, everybody probably knows that the Burlington is open. It opened last week and it looks very clean inside. It's a nice looking store compared to what they had previous, that they hadn't used previously. They're going to start the demolition of the old Burlington probably within the next six weeks. And that's just the interior area. We have plans that are under review. One of them is Don Bash Jewelers. They'll be on Fairlane Drive. We can look for that project starting fairly soon. And the Wave Car Wash on Highland Road just south of the hotel. In August, we have a DCA meeting on August thirteenth and one of the notable agents having attendance, Chip polling, we're putting in a, the drive-through window. With the plumbing commission, it was past month, there were some issues with the drive-through lanes and the turning radiator, so they're going to request a reduction in the parking spaces along the backside of the building. They've actually submitted a forty-four page document supporting the, the need to reduce the interior seating, so they will not need exterior parking to have the drive-through. They found the drive-through to be very, very inefficient in the way it's gonna be. I guess if you do it all online, they get a tang to come up. It'll almost be more like a delivery service to, to the cars as opposed to a drive-through is the way that I see it. With plumbing commission, the God of School will be coming in for a final site plant approval on August fifteenth. And if I could say, I want to add to the mayor's comments, I, I've actually been doing inspections at the, uh, the restroom at the Veterans, Veterans Park. And we do inspections on our own buildings just like we do that on any other building. The guys have actually done a remarkable job with what they've done so far. I was actually very impressed by, by the plumbing. Plumbing's not an easy thing to go ahead and manage and I thought the guys that were out there did, did an extremely good job. That's all I have.
Thank you. One quick thing, because I get asked this a lot and I want the public to know, where are we at with IHOP? I get this question every day, I'm not kidding you. What's that building? What's happening? And if they notice, they ask how long it's gonna be. So I want, I want you to tell people what's going on.
IHOP, they took a long time in getting their switchgear, which is another metal product for their, their, uh, their power. So they just got that installed. They have just energized that building. So, and oddly, they had another problem, they couldn't get a four-hundred amp switchgear. They had to go with a three-hundred amp. And that means that eventually they'll have to replace all of the conductors and some of the, and the main breaker that in the panel. But I, I'm afraid he knows much about the electrical system, but the, the three-hundred amp service takes five hundred kCm conduit. There are conductors which are about that big, seven hundred and fifty kilo lugs. And they had four guys trying to push this through the conductors the other day. It was, it's pretty interesting, but they'll remove all of that and put that and replace it once they get the proper switchgear for the four-hundred amp service. They have completely framed down on the inside. They've started drywalling. Actually threw away all the rough inspections of the walls. They've got the ceiling stuff to run, but I think the biggest hurdle that they had was getting that, that power. Once you get power, you've got a lot going for you, but you know, the, the, the previous building was without power for extended period of time.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Coming in. Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to make this as quick as possible because I have a short video at the end. It's been a busy month. I replaced two domain controllers. Those were both Server 2012. Those were reliant on the new fiber link going over the rec center. I was able to get rid of the domain controller that was over there. Set up two new DNS servers, elevated the functional level of the domain to Server 2019, migrated all rec user data to the same servers as the city data, took Rec 2012 offline, migrated to a new backup server, replaced cameras at the park barn, three new desks, replaced the dispatch display, highlighted new laptop hardware due to HP enterprise hardware shortage. The laptops I normally buy, I can't get, so I'm trying to find another option. And then I have a third level of virus spam protection. The program's called Bull Wall and this is just a quick two and a half, three minute video about it to kind of tell you guys and explain what it does, why we have and why we.
We're going to trigger a real malware attack. Elsewhere in the building, someone will open an email which will release a potentially devastating attack on this corporate IT system. This is all gonna happen very quickly, so watch the screen. The email is being opened now. And that's it. In just about a second, the ransom care has detected the malware. The infected PC's been shut down and removed from the network and any encrypted files can now be retrieved from the backup. Missed a bit, let's go back in time and take you through it step by step. At 10:05, Jane here opened an email from someone she actually knew, but it contained an unknown form of malware which got through the existing first line of defense. Email's just one of the ways that criminals attack IT systems, but it could also be via USB, a visit to a website, from a drive-by attack through social media, via the Internet of Things or mobile devices, and they're developing new ways all the time. At this stage, of course, Jane here has no idea she's done anything wrong. But ransom care was monitoring the network traffic and identified the file encryption as soon as it began, triggering an alert here in the control room. When it sees a malicious event, the system sends an alert to the system managers wherever they are. The CISO got an alert on his phone. Crucially, the system also sends a network message to shut down the device that's encrypting the files. It's disconnected from the network, stopping the malware in its tracks and limiting any further damage to the network. Back in the control center, the ransom care system has logged a few files which were encrypted before the rogue device was shut down. It sends a report to the designated system manager. The encrypted files can immediately be recovered from the backup and you can contact the user of the infected machine to restore it. The wider network is not affected and continues to run normally. And that's it. A potentially devastating malware attack stopped dead in its tracks by ransom care. Installation couldn't be simpler. Unlike traditional IT security, which is installed on every device here, ransom care runs centrally on a designated virtual server in the backbone of your network. It'll work in the cloud, in Azure or ADWlets. Unless the system sees a malicious event, ransom care will run silently in the background, keeping your network safe without placing additional pressure on your system. But when you are attacked, ransom care responds 24/7, quickly, decisively and effectively. It's a revolutionary last line of defense when all else has failed. Can you afford to be without it?
Basically, it's, it's AI that looks for behavior that it considers unusual and it allows on attack, it basically pumes up five to eight files, but by that point, it knows what's going on. It knocks the user off the domain, it knocks the machine off the domain, powers it down, it stops it right there. And then it's just a simple, I go into the backup and I restore the file, just like somebody deleted. And you literally could encrypt your entire system that quickly, you know, three to five seconds if it's, if it's dug in too much and nothing catches it before you know all your files gone. So it's suited, it's running. I don't think any of the end users know it's been running or noticed it running, so that's a good thing. And the, the centralized design keeps it from slowing down any, but any end user's systems. All the work is done by a virtual server in the backend. So if you guys don't see it, it just does its job and gives us another layer, lever, layer of safety. Thanks, end of report.
Thank you. Excellent work as usual.
Thank you, Director Collins.
Director Gedetti.
I'll work with Council Clerk Hoover to ensure that we get the hearing request submitted in time to the Division of Liquor Control. And other than that, I thank Mr. Vares for ensuring his hard work for the city is never unnoticed.
He points that out, huh? Any unfinished business?
You have a sense of humor, right?
Any new business?
You should have heard his joke earlier today.
I have a business. I had a resident company wanting me to bring this call to council. They'd like us to consider and discuss the fireworks law that went into effect. They had concerns about the noise and the potential danger because you can now buy commercial grade fireworks as well as, the next time it's legal is Labor Day, so we still have time. They wanted me to bring two so we could talk about it with the mayor and the law department and decide. I made no promises, as I just said, and I'm bringing it to us to talk about because the city can opt out.
Well, it's not commercial grade. It's only retail. So that's a very important key thing there. It's, it's only the retail fireworks, not the commercial.
Right, but.
That's a big, vast difference. That's a huge difference.
But I gotta tell you, the ones you can buy are, only because my nephew-in-law bought them, guess where, American fireworks and they were amazing. They're not the sparklers and they're not the little, they're basically professional.
But to the mayor's point, there's a difference between consumer grade and commercial.
But the residents still has concern and I understand why after seeing what they could buy. Yeah.
Well, I, I wanted to throw out there, actually, I would really like to hear from residents their opinions on whether or not the city should take action regarding the new fireworks law, just because it went into effect and, and we have the ability to opt out before it went into effect. I think a lot of people thought that we had to act on it before it went into effect and that was it. We can act on it at any time. So I would encourage people to, you can email jhoover@massachusetts.org with any of your comments, whether you are for us not opting out or whether you would like us to opt out. I would really like to hear from as many residents as possible. You can reach out to any of us via email. You can call and leave a message. What's the number?
Four six eight eight three four one.
There you go. And then you can contact us on social media. You can contact the city via social media and let your friends and neighbors know. We just want as many opinions on it because we really haven't had many opinions on it, but, or, or people have asked us a question and, and not followed up with, with what they think that we should do. So we are open to hearing from anyone and everyone about it. So, so please do reach out to us and let us know what you think, especially it's been good since, you know, we, we experienced the three days of, of it being legal over the Fourth of July weekend, so everyone kind of has a feel about what their neighbors would like to do and, and the extent of that. So, so now's a good time to definitely get in touch with us about that.
That's why I brought it up. One person is not gonna make the decision. It's really not us up here to, it's your input.
Yeah, we really need, we really need input on it because I think we have five maybe differing opinions on it, six differing opinions.
I'd like to ask the police chief, if you don't mind, did we have a sufficient amount of more complaints than usual since this might went into effect?
No.
How was, did we have any incidents that the EMTs? Nothing more than usual?
No.
Good to know.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
I didn't see this, this came to me before Fourth of July and watching what I saw, no one was using them in our neighborhood. They were used in, you know, fashion kind.
And actually, to be honest, you know, I, I have dogs that are sensitive to it and we just make a plan to, we go in our basement and all this stuff. And, and I think the people of Macedonia... of Macedonia were actually pretty good about cutting off around, you know, everyone kind of started around nine or 10 and everyone was done by 11 o'clock and which is totally fine.
There is some, and I don't know where, I'm a little located to the west of them head, the new ones, but I still can't figure out where they were because I could see them from the top of my road.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at them like, I can't tell if they're Macedonia or Saguar.
Oh, yeah. There's some big ones out there that are consumer grade, actually. So, yeah, please let us know, anyone's opinions, you know, throughout, there's no hard dates, but sooner the better, you let us know your opinions.
Thank you. Any other new business?
I'd like to make a motion to enter to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 121.22G1. And I would also like to invite the mayor, the law director and Chief Golden into this meeting.
Second.
Roll call. Ms. Brant.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Grabus.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.